We do have a forum. Good afternoon and welcome to the February 26th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, Chair of this committee. I am joined by the Honorable Amir Farroki to my right and the Honorable Antonio Lewis and to my left Vice Chair Dustin Hillis and the Honorable Mary Norwood. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Absolutely.
Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Mr. Johnson, will you please open the vote?
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The agenda has been adopted.
May we have a motion to approve the amendments? Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The amendments have been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We do have four public speakers at this time. Ms. Henri Jordan.
What's ready?
Everyone that's here, husband love your wives, even as Christ also loved the church and gave himself for it. Ephesians 5, Chapter 25, verse 1. The weak word rendered love is agapio, which denotes the willing sacrificial giving on the husband part for the benefit of his wife without thought of return. I read the scripture to James' grift because God said James is against his word. The wife have not power on body but the husband, and likewise also the husband have not power on his own body but the wife. 1 Corinthians 7, Chapter 4, verse 1. James had been with so many women, made him not to be my husband, Jesus informed me. Come in on my roof, don't make him my husband. Give her of the fruit of her hands, and let her own works praise her in the gates. Proverbs 31:31. James desires for me, for his wife, because of the income Jesus created through me. The word said, give her of the fruit of her hands. The praises also belong in the gates. When James worked against the word, he told Christ the income then belonged in his hands. For he that is married care for the things that are of the world, how he may please his wife. 1 Corinthians 7, Chapter 33, verse 1. James' action told Jesus, myself and others, he don't desire me as his wife. God gave me a dream, James, these will not be able to teach men how to be a Christ-like husband. The word of Jesus created income. Jesus, let them know that you will fight for me. When James' grift seeks to block me from helping his people, then he asks for death. We want to help life. The word of Christ give us life, and I need that life that comes from the word of God. Do you need that life that comes from the word of God? Because God cannot lie. He cannot be destroyed. We need Him. He don't need us. And I thank God for letting me stand before you. God, give me the power to stand as you said stand, not my flesh. A man said stand, because I want to be controlled by Jesus, because we are self-destructive. I know that I am. I chose James' grift, but Jesus Christ give us power to fight against Satan in us, around us, and in others.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Greg Pridgen.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Chair Boone, Vice Chair Hillis, the other distinguished members of this Public Safety Committee. It is always a pleasure and an honor to stand before you and stand back in this location again. I'm back at home, and I know each and every one of you is a servant to the people, and you're trying to do good work. I'm coming for you today in reference to an ordinance that's been held on this agenda for quite some time. This is a matter that's number 24 on page 8, and it is an ordinance that's in District Number 2, which Councilmember Farroki serves as the District Councilmember. And to say the least, this has had a little controversy about it. However, we're going to present you with a couple of things, and I'll try to get through it quickly. Councilmember Farroki asked that the owners, who I have with me today, meet with the Neighborhood Association, which we did on two occasions. On the first occasion, they were not so pleased with the proposed package store because of what they have now, is a specialty food shop, and the neighborhood likes it and says they wanted it to continue. The owners decided that they would meet the demands or requests of the neighborhood and keep the specialty food store, and as a part of the package, they wanted to have spirits to be sold in the store. The other things they agreed to do was to have security at the place every day from 6:00 to 9:00, to change the hours to 9:00 p.m., 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. They would keep a grill open, and they would apply for a permit to sell liquor, alcohol by the drink, so people could drink when they have their meals. In spite of all these and others, the community did go back and decide not to support it, even though these were the conditions that were presented to the owners by the community. It was a little bit baffling, a little bit stunning to the owners, because they had done everything that the community asked them to do. These gentlemen have invested millions of dollars in this location. They have committed to staying here at this location as long as possible, and they want to make sure that they continue to serve this community. They are part of a buffer between the houses and the large street, which is Decatur Street, and the MARTA station, and the dog park on one side, and King of Pops on the other. So they believe that there are positive impact on this community, and they would like for you to approve the legislation, which is 23-0, that's 1605. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. J. Wesley Day.
Keith Gammich, the Solicitor General of Fulton County, does not like gay people. Greetings. My name is J. Wesley Day. I hail from Chicago, and I am a current District 3 resident of Atlanta. In 2018, I was beaten into a coma on life support on Edgewood Avenue, District 2, that belongs to Amir Farroki. I was survived only through a ventilator at Grady Hospital. The first injustice that Keith Gammich charged me with a misdemeanor, although I had my assailant on video camera tossing homophobic slurs and beating me. The second injustice is that Keith Gammich dismissed the case against my main assailant, who's on camera beating me. The third injustice is that Mr. Gammich upgraded my case, the clear victim, to be recommended for a felony by Fonny Willis. As a result, I lost my job with Delta Airlines because I reported that I had a pending misdemeanor. It was Delta Airlines that brought to my attention that I had a pending felony. My charges would not be dropped by Fonny Willis until four years later. At this point, we're over five years from when I was beaten in 2018, and not one of my assailants, who's captured on video, we know who they are, have been charged with the crime. It is of the utmost importance that justice prevail in my case. I have faced an unconstitutional atrocity at the hands of Keith Gammich. The owners of the joystick game bar are also the owners of the Georgia Beer Garden, where often you all fraternize. Keith Gammich has no moral compass that he can charge me when I have my assailant on camera. I thought that this was the city that was too busy to hate, but yet I have written to you all, I have spoken to you all, and not one person have done anything to assist me to get justice in my case. Charles Huggins' case was dismissed in 2020. My case would not be dismissed until 2022. There's one assailant that's still on the line, William Nashawn Scott, and they're telling me that they're going to dismiss his case because they say I extorted him and hacked into his Facebook account. Justice for J. Please stand with me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. DeJuan Robinson is our last speaker.
I'm afternoon, Madam Chair. As I often say, we're in the 50 year of Maynard Jackson. Antonio, I'm not sure you know that Maynard Jackson died at the airport in Washington, D.C., right? Going to take care of business in D.C. because he couldn't get a job here in Atlanta, right? And I often asked you guys last year, when Mr. Hillis was Chair, what is the plan for public safety when it comes to Atlanta and keeping us safe? You guys have still failed to give us a plan. One of the reasons why I'm glad you were stopped last week, because Narick sparks up the conversation, but it shouldn't have taken that. You know what I'm saying? You're a young man born and raised here in a district where it's highly crime-infested, and we got to have a conversation about what are we doing to keep these streets of Atlanta safe? We can't wait till it hit Buckhead, we can't wait till it hit Dustin's side of Bolton Road to spark up these conversations. I was at an event last week where the Atlanta Police was working with the Atlanta teens with Park and Rec with the Iprama Center. I was pleased to see that there's a partnership there that I wasn't unaware about. Madam Chair, we got to do a better job of getting these things out there, because sometimes you have speakers like myself saying that we're not doing these things. That's because we don't see it. And indeed, we are doing these things. We're just not doing a good job of promoting these things. And we have to have a conversation, because though Mr. Lewis did cooperate in giving up the unsmoke marijuana blunt, the process is that you shouldn't be put in handcuffs. At that point, you are under arrest. So either it is an arrestable offense or it's not. So that's a conversation we have to have without pointing fingers at each other, but that conversation has to be had, because most people are not going to be as diligent as Mr. Lewis and be as cooperative, and in those moments that you are not, you can lose your life. And we have to have these conversations, because we can't be a city, you know what I'm saying, too busy to hate, and we can't be a proactive city that leads the world when we say Atlanta influenced everything, but we constantly get people who are not from Atlanta to make these decisions. Like, that doesn't make sense. Either we influence it or we don't, or either we're going to be proactive, either just the Homer of the King or Maynard Jackson, or is it not? Because we doing everything to help those who killed Homer of the King or those who alienated Maynard Jackson. Which is it? Like, we can't have it both ways. And Amir Farroki, you look about 20 years younger with that haircut, man. I thought maybe you sent your son to here or something. You look young, man. And so I'm just saying, we need to have these conversations. I don't want to be coming out here, there's beating over the head, Mr. Hillis, but we got to be proactive, man. We can't be reactionary. We got to be proactive on these things, and we need police, and we need the respect with the police and the community. We need to bring that back.
The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, for coming in and speaking to that. As you know, the laws in the city of Atlanta, and they're constantly changing. The laws in the city of Atlanta, state of Georgia are constantly changing. As of yesterday, in the state of Georgia, we've passed, well, the House has passed legislation to where a police officer is not even supposed to pull you over for registration, suspended registration, suspended insurance, these type of things. I don't want to be wrong on the insurance portion, but that's how much the law has changed, that I'm reading it right now, and I know that right now, if an officer sees you with a suspended registration, they're now supposed to mail you a ticket. And so sometimes, we know we're in places where the officers may not even know the laws, but that's a brand-new law that we have in the state of Georgia, that they're putting on the books right now. And so on March 18th, we'll be hosting the Roseale Fan, a campaign which is going to talk about the laws in the state of Georgia, so people will, if you ever in an incident like that, you know how to handle it. I thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do we have any printed materials, any flyers on that event yet? We'd like to get some flyers on that event.
I appreciate you.
Absolutely. Thank you. At this time, we are here from our Assistant Chief Tyus for a brief report.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. As I said, we're not on the agenda, but the Atlanta Police Department keeps public safety at the forefront of its mind every day, so it's just important that we just give you a brief synopsis as to what we're seeing and where our crime is trending at, so that everybody's kind of on the same page. So I apologize that we don't have slides, and this will just kind of be a brief overview. So just year-to-date, we've seen a 9% increase in crime year-to-date, and a lot of that is still property crime, which is trending. Our burglaries are trending upward about 37%, and then we're looking at theft from motor vehicles up about 9%. It's important to note that our violent crime, robberies, are still down 20%, and our aggravated, I'm sorry, robberies are down 10%, and our aggravated assaults are down 20%. So we're still seeing shootings, but at a much lower rate, and that's just because of the good work of the men and women of the Atlanta Police Department. And so one thing to note, just APS was out of school last week. Historically, we see an uptick in crime. God bless you. However, this week, we did see a significant downtrend in our theft from motor vehicles and our motor vehicles theft. We saw 11% decrease in those theft from motor vehicles and an 8% decrease in those motor vehicle thefts. And that's just, our officers out there, they engage, and those officers are motivated, and a lot of that is just thanks to you all there. We've put out about 160 take-home vehicles, so the officers see the investment from the mayor and this council body, so just thank you all for that. And they continue to work. One investigation of note was a couple of weeks ago at the Georgia Terrace. Our narcotics unit hit a warrant with a couple of our outside agencies and got 10 kilos of cocaine from 659 Peachtree. And just understand, where there's that much drugs, there's going to be guns there at those locations. So just kudos to the officers that continue to work out there. And as I wrap up, just note that we are celebrating Black History Month. As you know, the patches, we've allowed our officers to wear this month to celebrate Black History Month, so just thank you all for your continued support, and I'll take any questions, if anyone has any.
Chief, first, I'd like to really thank you for the great communication that we have been getting from your office, and we can, we are able to explain and converse with our different parishioners about it. So thank you so much.
Absolutely, ma'am. I mean, you should know the information when we know it, so you can push it out to this community.
Thank you so much. The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
Two quick things, and one, I think you may have to, I don't know if you have with you, is there a breakdown on where the cars went? You say 160 cars have come new patrol vehicles.
Yes, sir. So about half of those were take-home cars that went out into the community. Most of those officers are officers that live in your district, Councilmember Boone's district, Councilmember Hillis' district, so that's where those cars are going. So when you're driving through your district, you will see an Atlanta police car somewhere in your district. I can assure you, those residents out there, we get calls and emails every day thanking us for those vehicles being pushed out there.
And I think, that's why I thought you might have to come back with the answer. My question is, if you can give me a breakdown by the district?
I can.
Because, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You can now?
I can get that information to you, sir. It's just where the officer living in those districts and what the breakdown is, but I can certainly get that information to you.
Not by district, by zone. Can you give me a breakdown by zone?
Yes, I can get that to you, sir.
All right. And the second question is, what do you think, you gave the stats on school being out and crime being down. I know some of the things that we've been doing in the city to make sure we keep youth engaged. What do you think, what did you do different this year from last year as police to see this decrease? Because I thought that, I know there are a lot of different ways we're fighting to bring crime down. What do you all do different this year than last year?
Sir, the biggest thing is visibility. We identify these locations where we know our youth are going to be. It'll be at Atlantic Station, Camp Creek Marketplace. I know Major Clay partnered with East Point, South Fulton, down there at that marketplace, and they were just out there educating the public as to see something, say something. And also, we partner with Atlantic Station, where these kids tend to frequent. So just being out there, being on the forefront, engaging these people before their crime's being committed, because we know there's a lot of youth out there, and when they're out for the spring break, they're looking for something to do. And so we want them to meet their Atlanta Police Department, but we want it to be a positive interaction.
I appreciate you, visibility. Thank you.
Any more questions or concerns? Thank you, Chief. We look forward to seeing you again. Thank you so much.
No, thank you all.
Thank you. Our next presentation is from the municipal court.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Chris Portis. I'm the chief judge for the Municipal Court of Atlanta, and today I will be presenting the municipal court's quarterly presentation for the first quarter of 2024. The information that is contained in this presentation, since it's the first quarter presentation, is data and information that covers the entire calendar year, January through December 31st of 2023. Looking at the first slide is always accounting for the number of individuals who have come into the building for the period of January through December of last year. Roughly 370,000 individuals from the public have made their way into the building, on average, about 30,000 per month. These numbers are keeping in line for what we're seeing for an average of between 30 and 33,000 per month, month over month, year over year. The, this slide is the slide that displays the traffic case data from January through December of last year. The total number of traffic cases that were filed just short of 91,000. Total number closed just short of 91,000. The clearance rate for the traffic cases being 100%. This is where we want to be, especially as we move further away from COVID and back to normal behavior, number of operations. These traffic numbers tend to be at or beyond 100%. The number is where it is, in part due to the number of failure to appear cases that are closed. To arrive at the clearance rate, we take the number of cases that have been closed over the number of cases filed multiplied by 100, and that's how we get that clearance rate point. Looking at a similar type of case metric for criminal cases, the total number of cases filed for criminal matters in calendar year 2023, just short of 10,000. The total number closed right at 6,000. The clearance rate for these cases being 63%. These cases do represent a higher proportion of failure to appears, which we will talk about in just a few moments. Looking at the housing and code cases, this slide being particularly concerned with the housing cases for both residential and commercial properties, the number of cases filed in 2023 just short of 3,000. The total number closed just over 3,000 for a clearance rate of 111%. And again, similar to the traffic, this is also taken into account, cases that may have been in failure to appear status that will also close during this relative time period. Looking at the total caseload report for the calendar year, which is also information that we, as a court system, submit to the Administrative Office of Courts on an annual basis. The traffic cases are accounting still for three out of four of the total case count and caseload, and then the breakdowns for the other categories such as misdemeanor drug, other misdemeanors, the parking violations, the non-criminal traffic cases, the serious traffic cases, as well as the DUI cases rounding out the other one-fourth of the case population. Looking at the failure to appear rate for calendar year 2023, the total number of cases that went into failure to appear status was just short of 44,000. As we move forward through the slide, one thing that I always do like to point out is the metrics that we capture on the failure to appear slide are those cases that actually go into failure to appear status on the actual court date. Of course, some of these cases will ultimately make their way back into court and close. We don't reconcile the number for the purpose of actually accounting for and counting the total FTA, because we count the actual failure to appear appearance itself. Now moving on to the number of failure to appears closed in 2023. As stated in the previous slide, the total number of cases that went into failure to appear status being right at 44,000. However, the total number of FTAs closed being just short of 24,000. So there's about a 20,000 case difference in between those two numbers. Of course, some of those cases will remain unclosed in FTA status. Some of those cases have come back to court and unaccounted for in the total close, but are at some point in the process and at some point will close. So looking at where we've been post-COVID, this gap is, based on the data that we're watching, is beginning to close, and we want to see it close even further as we move forward in normal order behavior. One of the things that's really helped with this process, as we've been stating for the past year, strict compliance with state law, especially as it concerns the traffic cases and holding folks to account who fail to appear in court and do not rectify the FTA within that 30-day time period. We do transmit the information to the Department of Driver Services, and Department of Driver Services in return places those licenses and suspension status, and that has been a major driver in helping us close the gap, at least with the traffic cases. One thing that we do see in the data in particular are the criminal cases, however, the numbers, especially if you look back at the number of criminal cases filed versus closed, continues to maintain a point of concern that those individuals still at a larger proportion of cases are not appearing. Looking at the total number of bind-overs for calendar year 2023, the total number of cases filed was 100,473. The total number of cases totaled, both traffic and criminal, that were bound over, just short of 8,000. The bind-over rate for that calendar year being 8%. The same type of metrics for the number of warrants signed for calendar year 2023, month over month, is just short of 16,000. And just taking a look at the front office operations to get an idea of the flow of, first slide being a flow of individuals into the building, this slide just putting a cap on what it looks like for those individuals who are manning those front offices and the business that is handled at the clerk's windows. The total number of actual citations, which is different than the number of cases, just short of 110,000. The total number of records sent over to DDS electronically transferred, 84,000. The total number of filings presented to the clerk's window, and these are filings such as motions, but exclusive of things like waivers for failure to appear and reset requests, as well as address requests excluded. These items being things like motions, just short of 11,000. We bagged those numbers out just to get a general snapshot, because those other categories not included represent such a large portion of the business at the window. such a large portion of the business at the window. And the total number of open records requests, January through December of last year, 398. As of today, all of those requests for calendar year 2023 have been fulfilled and are closed. And that rounds out the first quarter of '24 presentation. I'm happy to take any questions that the committee may have.
Thank you, Judge. Do we have any questions, concerns from the body? No questions or concerns, Judge. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation, the Solicitor's Office, the Office of Solicitor, Raines Carter.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Boone, and good afternoon to all members of the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. I am Raines Carter, City Solicitor, and I'm happy to make our presentation to you as always.
Solicitor Carter, we have been joined by the Honorable Michael Julian Bond. Thank
Our agenda for today, of course, will go over our mission. Overall, we have some numbers that we want to present regarding record restriction. We want to specifically talk about the DUI prosecution, and we want to inform you of a wonderful collaborative between the City of Atlanta and Fulton County called Operation Double Victory. And then we will close out with our community outreach. Of course, our mission is always stated to represent the citizens of the City of Atlanta in all matters that are brought before the Municipal Court. We work in close partnership with law enforcement agencies, all of our citizens and the greater community, and we are seeking to promote a safe environment for lawful behavior for people that are residents and people that visit our city. This is an ever-evolving goal as we carry on with changes in society. And so this can be subject to change from time to time. Want to say a few things about the process of record restriction. As you know, that is a state process that's also allowed in municipal courts regarding charges that are brought before municipal courts. And what happens is that certain individuals, of course, are allowed to have those things restricted from public view, which has an impact on employment, has an impact on loans, it has an impact on certain types of government grants and other programs. And the cases that appear on a person's criminal record can be eligible if they have properly completed a diversion program. In 2023, we process about 120 of these requests, which is an average of about 10 per month. We certainly feel like those numbers need to be increased. One of the things that we'll be looking to do in 2024 is to roll out more outreach to the public regarding the availability of restrictions. Our thoughts are to make it part of our community outreach, that you all take part in it. I think we need to have regular sessions to make the community aware of this. Now, most requests, of course, go to the higher courts. They go to, of course, the Superior Court and the State Court. But what a lot of people don't realize is that prior to 2013, if the offense was prior to 2013, it has to be initiated through the arresting agency, whether that was APD or some other arresting agency in our state. We have a wonderful process set up with APD, and I want to give special accolades to Ms. Carmen Grant, who works over at the Annex with APD, who works with us with the expungement. She does an excellent job of explaining to people that the expungement process is based upon when they made the change in state law in 2013. Now, if that offense was after 2013, you can file directly with the prosecutor's agency. That means if the offense was after 2013, you can actually go to the City of Atlanta Solicitor's Office website and start an online process through our online portal, and we'll be happy to accommodate. But we have to do, I think, overall, more public service announcements about the availability of this, because we only processed 120 of them last year. I'm sure that there are other people in the public that don't know that you can avail yourself of this process. The next area that I'm going to talk about is an update on our DUI prosecution for 2023. Our office has held multiple training events. We've had staff members, Ms. Holla Carey and others, that have really worked very hard with our law enforcement partners to train for DUI prosecution and all the procedures that go along with a valid DUI arrest. We've had those training sessions that have been attended by law enforcement agencies, including Atlanta Police Department, Georgia State Patrol, and then some of our law enforcement agencies that deal with our public colleges and universities. We deal with standardized field sobriety tests, effective report writing, which is essential for DUI cases, because there are very particular things that have to be in the report. We help them with courtroom presentation, courtroom updates, about case law updates, rather, and the implied consent changes, and just those things that go with impaired driving. And this is a thing we have to remember about DUI. Impaired driving can be as a result of medication. It can be as a result of natural substances that people take that think will help them feel better, that are unregulated by the FDA, and of course, alcohol. So we have to keep that in mind when we're dealing with that. Just to give you an idea, we generally, post-pandemic, we've generally been dealing with about 1,500 cases per year, post-pandemic. These cases from 2023 were just a little over 1,000. What we find is that we average more cases each year from the Georgia State Patrol than we do from APD. Georgia State Patrol will average somewhere between 600 to 700 cases, APD, 500 to 600 cases per year. And this is what's been happening each year since we experienced the pandemic in 2020. The other thing that we've noticed is, of course, the seasonal trends that go along with DUI arrests. Interestingly enough, you would expect that DUI arrests would certainly be around certain holidays, but then there are other months where DUI arrests may peak. For example, we tend to get a lot of DUI arrests in the month of January, even after the holiday season. And in 2023, we actually had our highest number of DUI arrests in January, which was an interesting point. The lowest point of arrests usually, you would think, would not take place during the summer months, but that's when we have a lower amount, June, July, and August. Now, last year, we had a particular peak around the first two weeks in October, for some reason. That doesn't seem to coincide with any particular holiday, but last year, we were back up in the 30s for the first two months in October. So we're going to be working with Georgia State Patrol, APD, and our partners to try to see if we can make some sense of these trends that we saw in 2023, and do those things that we need to do to get a message out to the public about how dangerous this process is in terms of people drinking and driving, and the loss of life and impairment that it causes. What I want to do now is to basically present Operation Double Victory. I would like to take credit for it, but I can't. This is actually the brainchild of the Honorable Keith Gammitch, who is the Solicitor General of Fulton County. He'd been talking to me about this for a few years, and we have now finally been able to put together a process that I think will be very helpful to the City of Atlanta and Fulton County. As we have collaborations between city and county government, we have to keep in mind that we want to win for the taxpayers. We want to be able to properly utilize and conserve resources, and we want to be able to increase efficiencies. And those are the goals of Operation Double Victory. We participated in a cross swearing ceremony on the 15th of February, and this joint operation is going to be to resolve misdemeanor cases which result in the City of Atlanta but can later be bound over to Fulton County. And we want to be able to show that there is going to be continuity between the two processes. All too often, cases can fall in the gap. And we have had studies and we've had sessions about the consequences of that. And it's often said that justice delayed is justice denied. So we are working toward doing all of the things that we can to fill in those gaps. So the benefit will be to offer consistent plea offers from the very beginning, when the case first starts in the municipality, and then we can shorten that whole bind-over period that takes place. We'll have overall quicker resolution of cases for efficiency, and we want to provide a disincentive to what we call foreign shopping, people playing the game. They say, oh, well, this may not come up until a year or two later. The officer may not be with the office any longer. The witnesses, members might get foggy. So these are the things that we want to, to do. And I believe the... Let's see. Show you a short video. Thank you, sir.
Operation Double Victory is the culmination of Mr. Carter's office and my office, other officials between the city and the county, working together to strengthen resources, stronger prosecution, but also the opportunity for swifter and even more fair resolutions in a timely fashion.
I am so happy that we will not only be respecting the rights of defendants, but we will also recognize the rights of victims of crime, that there won't be these gaps that have existed between the two jurisdictions. And as a case starts here, it will have a completion in Fulton County that will serve justice to us all.
This is indeed a victory for the citizens of Atlanta and the citizens of Fulton County. As a judge here, I see thousands of cases a week, and to know that the case starts here, it can then go to the county and continue. It doesn't have to start over. That saves resources. That's going to save tax dollars, but it's also going to ensure that justice
And these, of course, are just some, some additional pictures to supplement the video regarding that historic ceremony that took place on the 15th. And I want you all to understand that this is the first time this has happened with the two prosecutors' office, with Fulton County and the City of Atlanta. So it is a mark in history for us to start this Operation Double Victory. And again, I want to acknowledge that this was brought to my attention by the Honorable Keith Gammitch, our Solicitor General. So let's talk about the people that are involved in the process. I'll start first by introducing some other people that accompanied me here today. I have Deputy Solicitor Rhonda Graham. Ronnie, would you stand? She oversees our DUI process. She's a very experienced DUI prosecutor. I also have Deputy Solicitor Andrew Taylor. Would you stand also? And I know you don't see them as much, but they are very, very integral to those things that we have to do. Thank you so much for joining us. The first person that we have, of course, is Deputy Solicitor Erica Smith. Everybody knows Erica. She's been with us over 18 years, and I am so proud to have her as part of this joint city-county process. I am sure that she is going to perform the way she does in every other assignment that we give her, and we're going to realize some real efficiencies that come with this process. We also have with us Senior Counsel Holla Carey. Holla, would you stand? And we all know Holla, who works very closely with our community outreach. Holla has been with the office over 14 years, and we are so proud and happy to have us to join the process. And she has been instrumental in helping with the training with the DUI process that we do every year. We also have with us a native Atlantan, Mr. Luther Dennis. Luther, would you stand, please? And Luther, how long have you been with us? You didn't include it.
2013.
Okay, good, okay. Okay, fantastic. And we're, we're happy to have Luther, and he does a wonderful job with DUI, DUI cases. And so these people will make up the Atlanta part of the team. And so now I'll go to the Fulton County part. I'm looking around because I was hoping that Solicitor General Keith Gammitch would join us, okay? But in his absence, I will go ahead and introduce him. Of course, he is our selected, elected Solicitor General. I believe he is going toward his third term in office, and we are very happy to have his vision realized with this process, and we look forward to a successful venture. We also have Ms. Odo Ekpo, who is one of the deputies for Solicitor General Gammitch, and has been practicing for some time and has former prosecutorial experience in the DeCap District Attorney's Office. Okay, we've also have to join us Mr. Mohammed Abdullah, who is an Assistant Solicitor with the Fulton County Solicitor General's Office, graduate of Georgia State Law School, and he's also a former City of Atlanta employee. And so we're happy to have him to be a part of the process also. Okay, and with that, we can go to our community outreach activities. As you know, we've experienced some inclement weather during the winter months, so there's not as many activities. But inclement weather or not, we always want to do what? We always want to meet and be a part of our food distributions. And we're so happy to have you all to be a part of that. And Councilman Bond, Chairperson Boone, Councilman Lewis, and I'm going to end up including everybody because I'm going to keep at you until I get all of the council districts involved with helping our community and keeping us safe, but also taking care of those basic needs as we move forward to provide food and shelter to our citizens. I think even with the I think even with the weather, it turned out that only one event had to be canceled or rescheduled, but other than that, we were able to move forward. And again, I want to thank Hala Carey and other members of the staff who regularly come out and participate to seek to make a difference in the City of Atlanta. And here are our partners again. Our colleges are included. We finally got the correct logo for Morris Brown College, so let Councilmember Amos know. And we are ready to move forward, and I thank you for your time. I thank you for your indulgence, and we are all here to answer your questions.
Do we have any questions or concerns from the body at this time? Mr. Carter, I do. Do you have a question? The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
Moral of a statement, I want to say thank you to Ms. Carey. Ms. Carey arrives early, and she's one of the last people to leave our food giveaway at Roseale Fan. I want to say I appreciate your office for making sure she's been there since day one. Sometimes I'm not even there, but I know the Solicitor's Office is there, so I appreciate y'all rain, sleet, slow for being there. Next, I had a question around... That was a statement, but next was a question around the Double Victory?
Yes.
I wanted to know how our judges felt about it. I know I saw the... I want to know how our judges, how our city judges would feel about that, the Double Victory, if you don't mind me asking. I know they're in the building.
Okay, well, I don't want to speak for them, but I will say that there should be no break in process or break in continuity. Our judges expect us to make sure that we give a proper presentation and a timely presentation. And I am assuming, I'm just making the assumption, that there's no change in that, that the judges not necessarily are concerned about who is before them, but to make sure that person is properly trained, authorized, and ready to move forward. I would like to take a moment to thank Judge Ultra Bay and the probate judge of Fulton County, Kenya Johnson, for participating in the ceremony. But again, I don't want to speak for the judges, but it is our intention to make sure that there is no break in the flow, that there is no slowdown, and that they are able to see quality prosecution as they should expect from the Solicitor's Office and from the Solicitor General's Office.
From the outside looking in and from hearing from Mr. Gammage about this program, I understand that you're very intentional about this, and it's a way we can work together from the full out. So I just wanted to hear what the judges would have to say about it, but I appreciate you for saying that. Thank you. I relinquish chair.
The Honorable Michael Julian Bond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Carter, again, for not only excellent presentation, but obviously excellent work that you continue to do through your office and with this dynamic staff. I've got a couple of questions, but first, I also want to thank your office for always being there and volunteering with us and HelloFresh every Wednesday. And of course, we've been doing it now for over three years, only rained on us twice in three years. And so also wanted you to mark your calendar because on the last Wednesday in March, on the 27th, with the assistance of your office, we will be celebrating our 1,000,000th meal distributed. So we would like for you to personally be there, and of course, to be an open invitation to everyone to attend, but we would like for you to be there. I'd like to go back to your initiative with the Fulton County Solicitor's Office. And I've always been an advocate for the city and the county partnering wherever they could, particularly in the arena of our criminal justice system that is probably more integrated than any other area other than our water and sewer concerns and our joint effort with the joint plant. Now that you have accomplished this, and I'm sorry that the Chief Judge has left, are there any other areas in which our court system or parts of it are going to be seeking similar partnerships? Because I know, and I don't want to date myself, I know the City of Atlanta Municipal Court used to be a court of special, was it dispensation? Or I can't remember the exact term, but we were able to handle state-level courses, and in dealing with that, that diverted a lot of cases from going over to Fulton County in the first place. Are there other conversations? Are you aware of any other conversations that are taking place about urgent some of those other processes?
Yes, I am. We have been working on some research, and the matter was actually brought to my attention last year by Councilmember Antonio Lewis. And we have started doing research. We find out that the authority, the legal authority for the process of intake of state cases and handling those cases on the city level or sending them to state court, that authority is still there. That authority is still there in the charter and in our state laws because our judges are actually designated magistrates, just like other magistrates in the state. So to answer your question, the discussions at this point are still in the research phase. I have had one conversation so far with our city attorney about it. However, I have some information that I need to get to her in the next couple of weeks, but it's still in the research phase.
So given the fact that that authority still exists, we could be, within the functions of our court, actually diverting cases that would end up in Fulton County, one, to kind of ease the burden on their general court dockets, and of course, it would affect the jail population potentially because people could get access to a bond hearing on the municipal level without even having to go over to Rice Street.
Yeah, those statutes did not change. There were policy decisions that changed things, but those statutes have not changed. Those statutes are still there.
Well, that's actually very good to know. And I just wanted to ask you again, we're going to be coming around to the budget hearings. Are there things that you're going to need in the upcoming budget that we should probably be made aware of or so that we could better advocate for your office?
We will be discussing with the administration to make sure that with Operation Double Victory that we have the attorney resources in place. And of course, with that goes some support staff, but to answer your question, we're in the process of putting those figures together. We have some budgetary meetings that are already scheduled with the administration that we will be attending. In fact, one of them is this week that we'll be attending. So I would ask you to please stay tuned because we would be coming forward with a particular request.
Okay. Well, again, I just want to thank you and your staff for the exemplary work that you all always do, and I'm looking forward to seeing how well this initiative works out. And again, just high compliments to you, Mr. Solicitor. You know, you're an unsung hero in the city government, so you don't get enough credit for what you do. Want to make sure we're... I just say you want your bread butter, we want thick butter and lots of jelly on the credit you deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Also, Judge Christopher Portis, he's still in the audience. Judge Portis, please stand. Thank you. He's here. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, Vice Chair Dustin Hillis.
Good morning, Boone. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Couple of questions. One, following up on... I don't know, it was just somewhat discussed in a conversation, Councilmember Bond, on the Operation Double Victory program. Obviously, sounds like a great program that's rather new, maybe two weeks. Was there... You spoke to some additional funding you hope to get for the program, but it's obviously already up and running. So is there already additional funding outside of your normal office funding that was either requested or authorized? And then, since this is a cooperation with another government, I mean, much like the Divergent Center, which I sat as a co-chair of the board on with Fulton County, an IGA with Fulton County that's been enacted to authorize this program?
We have done a memorandum of understanding between the Solicitor's Office and the Solicitor General's Office. That memorandum was reviewed by the Law Department. We have launched this project without additional resources at its inception because what we want to do, of course, is to take the time to see how efficiencies can be realized from a financial standpoint. For example, if a person comes to the office and they tender a certain plea, and that plea is not accepted and the case is bound over, we are trying to work from a standpoint that the whole process doesn't start over. And so our intention is to have our people in place that will be cross sworn, which we all did in that ceremony at state court, so that there wouldn't be no additional costs on the county side. Well, the reverse would also be true. If we have a situation where the county prosecutors are with us and we make the decision that that case should stay in the city, then that revenue comes into the city. So we decided to go ahead and launch the project so that we can start looking at some numbers and put some metrics together so that any request that we make on the city side and the county side would have some factual backing behind it, other than just a request saying, I need this or that many attorneys. So we are looking to see how it will be for the next 60 days, to see what savings can be realized, and to see what revenue streams also would near to the city by our case staying here. So we're in that process now.
Got you. Second question is related to the process in which the city has started doing, well, it's been a few years now, but code enforcement cases with properties owned by LLCs. I know I've asked this question a number of times, but those cases that are referred to the civil process now, if they are owned by LLCs, seems to be unfortunately fairly stagnant, at least from my point of view when I'm out in the neighborhoods and at neighborhood meetings and MPU meetings and hear from people where they're complaining about nothing has changed on these properties, where, you know, previously it might take a minute as well, but at least, you know, if this property got a notice, a citation, then went to court, perhaps they FTA'd, but you know, that's a dead end, and then the city could take action to clean up that property. And I'm just not seeing that with these cases that are getting referred to the civil process. So if you could update me on where we're looking to find some efficiencies and improvements in that process?
Yes, I'd be happy to. We have two processes that are going on in the city with regard to these distressed properties. We have always had a code enforcement nuisance process that's been ongoing for years, but we now have, as of last year, the Safe and Secure Housing Initiative by Mayor Dickens' administration. What we're doing now is we take those processes and we basically, first of all, identify the potential properties, and we prioritize them for inspections. That's a review of data. That comes from owner information, GIS information based on council districts, police zone, and MPU. Then we pull in the crime reports from the MARK 43 system, which is the APD system, and then we also overlay it with the calls for service. Now, the calls for service aren't just APD calls. We also include EMS calls and calls to the fire department. Then we also bring into the system from watershed, the overdue water bills. And basically, we also bring in information from our affordable housing partners, HUD, DCA, AHA, and Invest Atlanta. We now have a program manager who coordinates all of this for us in terms of the enforcement of the property, but also looking at affordable housing, especially with multifamily dwellings, because the issue is always going to be, you have these violations, but you also have to look at where are people going to live. So what we have been doing is, we have put a staff together, we have paralegals that basically identify these properties, prioritize them, we bring code enforcement in, well, actually, code enforcement initiates it. And then what we do is, now to give you some of our metrics, since we've gotten started, we have impacted 23 properties total. 13 of those properties are still in the code enforcement process. They're along the pipeline where violations have been found, where issues of notices of noncompliance, and some of these cases are presently before municipal court. With two other major actors, and I don't call any specific properties, but I'd be happy to give that information, we have also executed agreements. Now, a lot of people misunderstand when you use the word consent. That's a guilty plea. That's all that is. This is where they have pleaded guilty and say, okay, look, don't put me on trial, I'm going to do this. And so those things have fines that attach to them. We do have six that have complied, and we're continuing to monitor them, but what I can do for you is I have a list of properties, between 25 to 27 properties. I can just give you that list with the update on what has happened, but also, I can also give you the reasons related to properties where it looks like nothing has happened. I will say this, as you know, with this initiative, we had, as a city, to onboard our enforcement officers. And so it went from seven to now between 23 and 25 enforcement officers. So they are busy doing that. I am seeing the reports. So I would expect when the next 90 days are not going to appear like the previous 90 days, because those people have been onboarded now. We're working closely with Director Tally and with Mr. Ammon, and we're going to see those violations hitting the court system. And so I'd be happy to send that to you.
Got you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Carter, going back to the record restrictions, how can we push that out to the community? And is there any way we can do record restriction, amnesty, and something like that at the CT Martin Rec Center or the Roseale Fan Rec Center or the ML King Center to push those programs out to the community?
I would like to see it roll out in each council district, in each part of the city. What I am proposing with our community outreach events, as you know, in the past, we've had them focused generally related to youth and generally related to senior citizens. What we're going to be focusing on this year is to take in that middle section of people because that's where a lot of the sponge ments are dealing with people between the ages of 21 and, you know, 59, 60, that are part of the workforce. And what we want to do is to partner with each of you to roll out an event in your districts because we want to make this more accessible to the public. As I mentioned, we only processed 120 last year in a city the size of Atlanta.
Thank you very much. I know that I would be willing to partner with 9, 10, and 11, maybe could do it, and then we could do it in your district, Southeast. So that is something that we are very, very interested in, very much so. And also, thank you all for the Safe and Secure Housing Initiative. I met with a member of your staff last week, and that has really gone over well in the Kaya Height. Cuyahoga Heights and Adamsville area. Thank you so much. During Black History Month, I'm sorry that we did not send out a lot of invitations, but Mr. Carter was honored as a living legend, the longest-serving minority prosecutor in the nation. Congratulations to our native son. I think that it may have been over 300 people at the Jacksonville Memorial Baptist Church. It was a wonderful, wonderful celebration. So, again, congratulations on that. Any more questions or concerns? The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
And I want to say thank you to Councilmember Bond for bringing up the way of us standing up our old court system, and something we talked about then, and something I spoke to you about, is a way to, I think, I want to pose it as a question, something you can add to your, to your, what you're presenting to the administration, is if you can add something to look at the diversions, how many people we could divert from going into the implorable positions, situations at Fulton County Jail. I see this as a way as emptying our jails. I see this as us handling it before it even gets there. So, if you can put that in, and also, if you can do not a cost study, but to see if it could pay for itself, to see if it pays for itself, and to see if there's any funds left over. Would be...
We'll look at it, and we'll be happy to do a cost-benefit analysis so that we can see what the actuals would be in terms of finances. Be happy to add that to the process.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or concerns from the body? Thank you, Mr. Carter and your staff. I would like to also recognize the Chief of Staff from Solicitor Gamage's Office. Will you please stand? Thank you for your good work, and please thank our Solicitor. Thank you so much. Come on, you want to come on up, ma'am?
From the Solicitor General's Office of Fulton County...
Speak up. Your name again?
Ciara Bakerstaff, but just wanted to come before you in Mr. Gamage's absence, and Deputy EPCO Attorney Mohammed Abdullah there in trial today, but wanted to come and thank you, Mr. Carter, for the collaboration for Operation Double Victory. We did have a great swing in last week or so. Appreciate Chief Sherbaum, who's been extremely helpful with getting us the evidence for those cases, COO Lisa Gordon, and Deputy COO Burks for their partnership in helping us streamline a lot of these bindovers that are coming from the city to the county, I mean, as well as Ms. Erica. So, just thank you all for your partnerships and your collaborations.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, thank you all so much, and also, thank you to your wonderful, wonderful staff. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for all you do for the City of Atlanta. Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate you.
We have one more question or concern, one more question. The Honorable Antonio Lewis?
Yes. I was looking at the names of the people that you actually put on this. I don't know how your office is going to survive, because you gave us the top people. When we're looking at Operation Double Victory, both sides, when you look at EPCO, I didn't say the name right, I hope, I hope I said it right, but you gave us stars. You gave us the all-stars to work on this project. So, I appreciate you doing this. So, we will know in 60 days what it looks like because of who you gave us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Carter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Madam Chair, this takes us to our considered agenda.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve favorable items, claims 1 through 9. We have a motion by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, a second by the Honorable Antonio Lewis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six J's, zero N's, claims are favorable.
I will now make a motion to adverse the unfavorable claims 10 through 16, a second by the Honorable Antonio Lewis. Mr. Johnson, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six J's, zero N's, claims have been adverse. This takes us to Section H ordinance for first reading, item number 12401104, in ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to waive Section 2-783H1 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to authorize a settlement of all claims against the defendants in the case of Guy Spann versus Rashida Davis, Civil Action File Number listed herein, State Court of Fulton County, Georgia, in the amount of $75,000.0. Authorizing said amount to be paid from accounts numbers listed herein, authorizing Chief Financial Officer to distribute the total settlement amount and for other purposes, item number 22401109, in ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to retroactively renew the SPS 1200607, Atlanta Fire Rescue Department Online Training Management System Special Careman Agreement to provide online annual firefighting and medical certification with Contractor Target Solutions Learning LLC beginning February 6, 2024, and to authorize the mayor's need to exercise a second renewal option under the agreement on behalf of the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department for a term of one year retroactively effective February 6, 2024 through February 5, 2025, in the amount not to exceed $90,95,000.0. All contract work will be charged to and paid from the fund, department, organization, and account number listed herein, and for other purposes. This takes us to our regular agenda, Section I, ordinance for second reading. Madam Chair, this item will need to be amended. The amendment adds the state in ZIP code to the street address in the caption of the legislation. Can we have a motion to amend?
Moved by the Honorable Michael Julian Bond, seconded by the Honorable Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six J's, zero N's, item has been amended, item number 32401089, in ordinance by Councilmember Jason H. Winston, as amended by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, in ordinance to amend Chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10-94A of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, so as to provide an exemption from the distance requirements listed in Section 10-88 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances for one convention center selling alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises located at 525 Moreland Avenue, Southeast Atlanta, Georgia 30316, and for other purposes.
We have a motion to approve as amended, seconded by the Honorable Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six J's, zero N's, items favorable as amended, item number 42401091, in ordinance by Councilmember Keisha Sean Waits, amend Chapter 10, Article 2, Sections 2-92B of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, so as to provide an exemption from the distance requirements listed in Section 10-88.1 for package stores licensed to sell malt beverages and/or wine for an establishment located at 1535 Chattahoochee Avenue, Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia 30318, and for other purposes.
Honorable Dustin Hillis?
Thank you, Chairman Boone. So, this piece of legislation is a distance waiver for a gas station located in the heart of District 9, and was introduced by a colleague, Councilmember Waits, who just walked in. The author of the legislation never had a conversation with me about this. The store's owner or operator has never had a conversation with me. Whatever attorney may represent this store has never had a conversation with me. And not only that, they've never spoken, not once, to either the neighborhood this is located in, the Bolton neighborhood, who is aware of this legislation, as well as MPUD, which is also aware of this legislation and adamantly opposed to it. So, with that being said, I want to make a motion to adverse this.
It has been moved and properly seconded by the Honorable Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Amir Farroki, that this paper be filed.
Adverse.
Adverse.
May I speak to the legislation? I can't. Yeah, I will.
We will take questions or concerns. The Honorable Michael Julian Bond. Honorable Keisha Waits?
Thank you. And Councilmember Hillis, I apologize to you. This was brought to me by the owners and the attorney for the location, and I was under the assumption that that was a conversation, and now I recognize why it was brought to me. So, I want to apologize to this body. Would you be open to holding the legislation and killing it later after you at least had an opportunity to speak with the attorney?
My motion is going to stand, and if they want to have a conversation with me sometime over the next two weeks, between now and the council meeting, I'd be open to that. But my motion right now stands, and they can contact me. I have an open door and open phone policy. They could have called me at any time about this.
I respect that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Six J's, zero N's, items adverse.
Thank you, colleagues, for supporting this, and thank you, Councilmember Waits, with apology.
Next item?
This takes us to Section J Resolutions. Item number 524R3248, a resolution by Councilmembers Andrea L. Boone and Dustin Hillis establishing a fire design committee for the purpose of providing a collaborative structure for discussion between the Department of Enterprise Asset Management and the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department for the best recommendations during the design and architecture phase of the fire stations within the City of Atlanta and for other purposes. Madam Chair, this item will need to be substituted. The substitute makes some revisions in the body of legislation and asks the fire chief, the commissioner of dean, and members of the progressive firefighters of Georgia labor organizations to the fire station design committee. Need a motion to bring forth a substitute.
The motion has been brought by the Honorable Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Mary Norwood. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six J's, zero N's, the substitute before you?
We have a motion to approve, approved by Andrea Boone, seconded by the Honorable Michael Julian Bond. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six J's, zero N's, items favorable and substitute. Item number 624R3272, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the reemployment of retiree Leslie Lynum as a special events manager within the Atlanta Fire Department for annual compensation not to exceed $62,273.36 pursuant to Section 3-505C of the City Charter and for other purposes.
I make a motion to approve, seconded by the Honorable Michael Julian Bond. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six J's, zero N's, this item is favorable. Madam Chair, can you take items 7, 8, and 12 together as a block with no objection from the committee?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Yes.
Item number 724R3273, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the reemployment of City of Atlanta retiree Police Investigator Matthew Codlin in the Atlanta Police Department for annual compensation not to exceed $72,259.20 pursuant to Section 3-505B of the City Charter of the City of Atlanta and for other purposes. Item number 824R3274, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the reemployment of City of Atlanta retiree Police Investigator Paul Vignola in the Atlanta Police Department for annual compensation not to exceed $72,259.20 pursuant to Section 3-505B of the Charter of the City of Atlanta and for other purposes. Item number 12, 24R3283, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the reemployment of City of Atlanta Department of Police employee Patricia Freeman, Executive Assistant Senior under Section 3-505A of the Charter of the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
I make a motion to approve these items, seconded by the Honorable Michael Julian Bond. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six J's, zero N's, these items are favorable. Madam Chair, there is no objection from the committee. Can we take items 9 through 11 together as a block? These are settlement legislation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Item number 924R3275, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing settlement of all claims against defendant City of Atlanta in the case of Keyvon Robinson, Civil Action File Number listed herein, pending State Court of Fulton County, Georgia, in the amount of $555,000.0. Authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein, authorizing Chief Financial Officer to distribute the settlement amount and for other purposes. Item number 1024R3276, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendants in the case of State Farm Mutual Automobile Insurance Company, Trevor Smith versus City of Atlanta, Civil Action File Number listed herein, pending in the State Court of Fulton County of Georgia, in the amount of $2,341,043. Authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein, authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to distribute the settlement amount and for other purposes. Item number 1124R3277, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant in the case of State Farm Mutual Automobile Insurance Company, Mamadou Lamine Diallo versus City of Atlanta, Civil Action File Number listed herein, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, Georgia, in the amount of $2,700.0. Authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the funds listed herein, authorizing Chief Financial Officer to distribute the settlement amount and for other purposes.
We have a motion to approve these items, moved by the Honorable Michael Julian Bond, seconded by the Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. These items are favorable. Madam Chair, we have one walk-in paper, Elms ID number 34809, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee encouraging the Georgia General Assembly to amend the official code of Georgia to allow counties and municipalities the ability to authorize and regulate sales of alcoholic beverages on Sunday and for other purposes.
Honorable Mary Norwood?
Yes, I wanted to get some background on where this came from and what the purpose is. And I understand what the legislation says, but how did this come to our attention? Was this a personal paper, or what's going on?
The personal paper was, this paper was introduced by Councilmember Keisha Sean Waits.
Okay, so shouldn't it be a resolution by herself if she's actually authoring the legislation?
We hear from the Law Department.
Councilmember, I defer to the Law Department.
Ms. Robinson?
Hi. Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. When a paper is walked in, a committee cannot be a personal paper introduced with a name and sponsored by an individual counsel person. Personal papers may only be introduced during full counsel at the time of the personal papers being read in, either for immediate consideration or referral. So, for a walk-in, all walk-ins are, by definition, committee papers.
Okay, well, I'm not going to be supporting this. I would like a lot more information about what the repercussions will be if we start authorizing Sunday sales from establishments that do not have 50% food. So, I just, I would need, I need a whole lot... So I just, I would need, I need a whole lot more information before I would support it. I'll make a motion to hold.
One moment.
The Honorable Antonio Lewis?
So I understand when folks say, government, get out of my business. And right now, this is the City of Atlanta and other cities in the state of Georgia asking the state to allow us to have some autonomy over the laws we make in our city. And so I don't think that the state of Georgia is always making laws with the City of Atlanta in mind when I see hospitals closing. And so I don't think they have our best interest in heart ever, whenever they make, well, not all the time. When I see hospitals closing, I see that coming from the state. And so I support this legislation, because to me, it's a piece of legislation that allows the City of Atlanta to have a little bit more autonomy over what we do. And I think that any state, any person in the state of Georgia who represents a small government, represents small people taking care of themselves, they should support this legislation as well. And our council member came in to defend our legislation. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor.
Madam Chair, can you repeat the mover and the seconder?
The Honorable Mary Norwood and the Honorable Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five Y's, one Nay, this item is held in committee. Madam Chair, that concludes our legislative items for today.
We do have one announcement. Committee members, will you please mark your calendar for March 7? March the 7th, we will tour the Public Safety Headquarters, the Command Center. Will you all please mark your calendar? We have a shuttle that will pick up all members at 11:00 a.m. on March 7. March 7th, will you all please attend the tour of the Public Safety Headquarters, March the 7th? We were invited to tour the Public Safety Headquarters located at 226 P Street, but a shuttle will pick the members up on Trinity Avenue. Do we have any more questions, concerns, or announcements? At this time, this meeting is adjourned. The Honorable Michael Julian Bond.
I have an item that's on hold that I'd like to file. And it is item 24 on page 8. I'd like to pull it up and file it.
Item number 242301605, in ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, to amend Chapter 10, Section 2-93 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, so as to add a new subsection to provide an exemption from the distance requirements for package stores licensing to sell malt beverages, wine, and/or distilled spirits by the package listed in Section 2-88.1B of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances for one package store located at 536 Decatur Street, Southeast, Atlanta, Georgia 30312, and for other purposes.
Motion is to file.
Please open the vote.
The vote is closed. Five Y's, one Nay, this item is filed by committee. And Madam Chair, that concludes our legislative items for today.
Do we have any more questions, concerns, or announcements? At this time, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.